Thank you for joining us this evening. Regular scheduled council meeting of the Park City City Council on Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Marla, would you call the rule?
John Lynn here. George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sossetta.
Here.
George Capps. Tom Jones.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. This evening Pastor Chuck Peters is going to lead in the invocation and Ben is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for today. We thank you, Father, for the this moisture in the air. We thank you, Father, for our nation. We pray, Father, for our president, our senate, and our House of Representatives. Father, we pray for our state leaders as well. Heavenly Father, I would just ask for a special blessing upon this council. I would ask also for your wisdom on the decisions they have to make. Father, we also pray for protection of our first responders. Now, Lord, be with us in this meeting and just give us wisdom. We thank you for your blessings of the growth of the city. And, Father, we expect more. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
And Jim? You got a motion and a second? Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And that motion passes eight to zero. Tonight, under awards and presentations. Go ahead, Dana.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and I appreciate very much that in the invocation, it was mentioned that this city has certainly grown and we expect more growth. And in that vein, I have a new employee to introduce to you. As we expand, we have more needs for building inspection. Particularly at this time, we're needing some really stepped up on our electricals. So this evening, I would like to introduce to you Gary Carson. And Gary, if you would come forward, please. And he is very experienced when it comes to electrical. He has served a he has education, a four-year apprenticeship in electrical. He also worked for Cedric County as a combination inspector for several years. And we're very happy to have Gary Carson join our staff.
Hi, Gary.
Hi there. I want you to know I'm glad to see you all, to meet you all, to meet your staff and to see the kind of professionalism that it makes one proud to be a part of and look forward to what I can do to serve this community.
All right. We've heard good things about you and we definitely need your services.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have anybody signed up for public forum this evening, so we don't have anything for staff reports tonight. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sean, do you have something you want to go ahead and add?
Mayor, if I could, just a couple of different things. It's been put out on our website as well as Facebook that right now we're in the middle of the 2021 road improvement plan. So I just wanted to give a heads up to our residents that currently, yes, we have repairs that are being made currently along Ulysses and Robbins between Grove and Fairchild. The expectation from the contract is that it would be complete by the middle of November, but working with the contractors, they expect all the work to be completed by the end of the month. Crack sealing and overlay is taking place along 77th Street east of the roundabout as we're talking. And then just a friendly reminder that this Saturday is our shred day here at the City Administration Center from nine to noon. That's it, sir.
That's all?
We went by it. I thought maybe we were going to have staff reports. I wanted to ask what the status of our lawsuit is. Most of us have had no information into how that's going since we had a meeting and discussed depositions and who is going, and I just wondered what the status of it is.
Doug, do you want to give any update or we need to do an executive session? You just have dates.
I'll give you an update. Our attorney has filed a motion for summary judgment, which is kind of typical in zoning cases because they're really generally the facts are agreed to. That is set for hearing sometime in the middle of November, I believe, right now, but that's always subject to change. I would expect a decision from the judge not to be something that happens that day at the hearing. That's really unusual with a case that's that involved and has that much that those many documents associated with it. And the brief, I think the brief that our attorney filed was probably upwards of 30 or 40 pages, and I suspect it will be similar for the appellant. Likely a decision will be made because of the holidays, sometimes at the end of the year or maybe the first of the year. So really, nothing's happening right now.
Thanks, Doug.
Well, the reason I ask is part of it is that I was told that this would, and it's rumor, that this was going to happen in October and that we asked it to be slid to November. And I don't know whether that's factual or not. I'm just trying to get it out on table and either squelch a rumor or say, yeah, that's what's happening.
As far as I know, that's not true.
Okay, well, from my standpoint, I know nothing other than what I've been asked and told, so.
Well, and when did you hear the rumor?
Yesterday. I don't, I can't talk.
Nobody called me or emailed me or asked me any questions till tonight, so.
And that's why I'm trying to find out what's going on.
Well, anytime you hear a rumor like that, just pick up the phone and give me a call. I'll be glad to give you any information I have.
Okay. And the understanding is it was going to be this month and we deferred it till November, and I have no information other than that.
I'm not aware that that's the case.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ben, I see you're lit up. Do you have something to say?
Yeah, not to that, but yes. I do want to say I was driving down Grove and then onto Fairchild and saw the work being done over there on Ulysses. And I want to say big thank you to Zach. I know that he worked very hard for a while on that road improvement plan and that study that we saw a couple of years back. And to all the Public Works team that have been working and preparing that, thank you all for that. It's looking good. I'm excited to see how we continue on this process of improvements to our infrastructure across our city. So thank you all for your hard work. And I go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Good. Melvin?
Paul's second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion passes eight to zero.
Do I not get to ask my question? I had it lit up.
We probably got it mixed up there, yeah.
Melvin? Oh. That's why I went to him. George?
I just going to ask Doug, are you representing us in this lawsuit or is the insurance attorneys?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Are you representing the city in this lawsuit or are the insurance attorneys doing that?
The insurance attorneys, under our insurance policy.
Then our insurance attorneys would be the one making the motions.
Filing the documents in the case, yes, uh huh.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go to new business, item six, which is discuss and consider upgrade improvements to the electronics marquee signs located at 61st Street and 53rd. Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Let me preface this. I believe that this item is good for discussion, but I'm not certain if we'll be ready to take action on it tonight as it may involve more than one fund in order to pay for it. Back in March 2010, council approved the construction of our two electronic marquee signs. The one that's located at 61st Street and then the other one at 53rd Street. The original cost was just over $145,000 and council paid with that utilizing MTBE funds. Over the years, the signs have been invaluable conveying information and community events to our residents. That being said, the signs are displaying effects of the weather as well as data technology. So I was asked to secure a quote from Miracle Signs to upgrade and refresh both signs with the latest technology. There's a total of two quotes attached in the document. The first quote is simply a refresh of the lower graphics on each side of each sign. The cost for that option is just $2,095.15 per sign or $4190.30 for both of them. The second quote is a more expensive option to actually upgrade the technology by removing the existing 23-millimeter LED display and replacing it with a 10-millimeter pixel pitch LEDs. 10-millimeter pixel pitch more than doubles the current resolution of the signs. The second quote also includes replacing all internal lighting with new LED modules, the power supply, and comes complete with an all-new setup for software, connections, training, as well as refreshing the lower graphics mentioned in the first quote. The cost of this option is $50,506.09 per sign for a total cost of $101,120.18. The quotes are good for 30 days. This is an unbudgeted impact to the budget. But I reached out earlier to the Convention and Tourism Board to see if they would be willing to partner with us on that. Their next scheduled meeting is on November 8th, and I'm scheduled to discuss that too. Possible funding sources include Convention and Tourism, MTBE funds, or under the general fund under governing body.
So this is something that I asked that we come back and look at because the sign over next to Quick Trip is is pretty faded and cracked and it looks pretty bad. So really what I'm looking for tonight is just discussion from the council on is there one of these options that you're most interested in and not necessarily approving the contract? So that we can go back to CNT and see if they'd like to partner on one of these options that the council might want to. Ben?
I do have one question concerning the replacement and upgrades. I know, well, and correct me if I'm right or wrong. Well, I guess you don't have to correct me if I'm right. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
The lights along the 61st side on the east side there, well, I guess the module, is it able to, the lights right now currently able to dim and brighten? Or is it just one?
We've messed with that before and we have not had much luck, so that could be something in an upgrade that would be nice.
I think it's much needed because when we talk about being good neighbors and land value and everything like that, nobody wants to live in those houses right next to that when our sign is bright lights in at 2:00 in the morning. So I think that would be something very important for us to look at because if we're going to ask people in our city to make sure that they keep property values up for neighbors, I think it's only incumbent on us to use our facilities and our equipment to do the same thing, so. Yes, sir.
So you'd be interested in doing an upgrade and just making sure we have capability in the new upgrade that we could get that dim feature functioning?
Yes.
Tom, did you have something?
I was going to bring up what Ben brought up about the complaints that we got about the brightness of the signs that's existing, and I don't know having more pixels there, that's going to create more of a problem or if it just makes a nicer picture, so.
It's going to increase the resolution and again, it comes complete with an all-new software setup. Understanding that the technology that we're working with currently is 12 years old, from what I understand, being told by the manufacturer is 10 times more control over how the signs are programmed and the displays.
So we could make it neighborhood friendly then if we need to, possibly?
Yes, sir. I can check into that.
And the library recently updated theirs here within the last 12 months too. So if anybody's noticed, the libraries I can't remember exactly what their resolution is, but they did increase theirs and it's much nicer than what it was before. Brandy?
I think since the first one with the lower graphics or the lower stuff has lasted 11 years, I think it'd be wise to go ahead and upgrade to the more expensive option. I feel like it's a good return on our investment and when we price that out over 11 years, we're looking at less than $10,000 a year.
Okay. Jim?
I think I'm of the opinion also to do the upgrade rather than just the lower cost option. I think the signs get used a lot, looked at a lot. It's a lot of money to do the full upgrade, but that's unfortunately what they've cost. I financed a few of the signs around town and they're just expensive. But they get used a lot and I think it's a good idea to upgrade them. So I'd be more interested in sending it back to see what options we have to pay for the full upgrade.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Melvin? No. George?
I I confess, I've been down for a couple of weeks, but for the most part, when I walk down 61st Street, all I see is welcome to Park City and the Park City flag, very little information on it. Do we have someone who's supposed to be putting information out on that?
Yes, sir.
But I'm not seeing much.
We've had several things out there in this last week. We had the Boyle Advisory that we were not part of that and was part of that message. But I think something that we'd see would be in an upgrade. We would have a better refresh rate that we could use and we'd have better imaging. Because you have to figure it's I think we'd get better use out of it with a better upgrade.
Of course. When we first got those, we used them. There was all kinds of information out there now, but forever, I tell you, I could walk down the street walk down to my sisters and there was a Park City flag flying, welcome to Park City. That was it. And you know, that's not worth spending thousands of dollars on. If we're going to use them, we need to use them. It's just my first sense.
George?
Yeah, with any service plan or something that you're trying to keep updated, you have to keep those updates going over a period of time because they wear out or something else comes along. I see a lot of welcome to Park City, but I don't see much as far as the other things, as far as I'd like to see more events, more Park City oriented. Park City is a wonderful city or, you know, just something. And for somebody to keep that upgraded, and how often do they do it? I don't know, Sean, if you know that, whether it's something, I like to see more contact, more interest from the community. Maybe there's something they want to see on the sign. Somebody in Park City that says, hey, I would like to see this on the sign. I'd like to see more interaction with the with the public on that as well. But I think the upgrades are what's needed. Thank you.
Melvin?
Yeah, I think I'd be in favor of that upgrading the full electronics on that thing. I don't know, it may pay off energy-wise. I don't know, would it? Be cheaper on energy?
It would be reduced energy costs, but for the some figure of the expense, I don't think there would be offset by that.
Yeah. I imagine a little more flexibility. We could do more things with that too. And one thing I would like to see is on 61st Street, that sign kind of blocks the view of that thing. I don't know, is there any way to move that? I think it's what, stop ahead sign or something? Kind of I think we probably discussed this once before. You know, I'm talking about the triangular sign on the west side of it. Kind of blocks the view of that sign there.
We will check into that, sir.
Thank you.
Ben, do you have more to add?
Yeah. Well, I do want to say though, just in fairness and not to discount what others have said, but I've seen our buckle up signs out there. I've seen our Fall Fest that's coming up for our 40th anniversary thing. I've seen the Fourth of July events on there. So I know that they are on there and being seen. Or at least on there. I guess I can't control what people watch, but I know that staff is putting things on there. I do think an upgrade to the system that will facilitate better resolution pictures will help out our ability even more. But like I said, I've been driving around town and such, I do see those different events publicized on there quite often.
All right. Melvin?
One other thing is Miracle Sign, the only one that does that? Upgrades on those or?
They're just who we use and that's who we reached out to.
Isn't there George Lay and Miracle or some other places too that does that?
Yeah, I mean, we could go back and look at some other bids. I mean, we could use one and try to, but at first, our approach was how can we refresh that? They were the ones that did the install, so that would be the best option to go to. But if we want to look at new, I mean, this gives us an idea, but expensive either way you go.
Yeah. Well, I think the consent is kind of the upgrade it all the way, so.
All right. So we'll move forward with the direction of replacing it and we'll come back once we have something kind of hashed out. That brings us to item seven, which is consider the approval of a resolution directing the call for redemption of the 2010A and the 2013B general obligation bonds. Sean?
This item was created by our finance director who's on vacation this week. Well deserved. If council approves the resolution, the notice for call for redemption will provide will be provided to the Kansas State Treasurer to inform them that the city will be paying off the outstanding principal balance of the 2010A and 2013B general obligation bonds on December 1st this year. As discussed during our 2022 budget process, the city's financial advisor As discussed during our 2022 budget process, the city's financial advisor had initially recommended refunding these two bonds to obtain a lower interest rate. That process would have involved staff time and the cost of issuance of the bonds. Upon further discussion, staff determined that due to the relatively low outstanding balance of the bonds, it was a greater benefit to the city to pay them off instead. This saves the city from having to make the future interest payments totaling one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. Additionally, a large portion of these two bonds are paid by special assessments, which the city will continue to collect, thus replenishing the cash in the bond and interest fund. The amount of the regularly scheduled December first, 2021 principal and interest payments on these two bonds is one hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. There's principal and interest. If the resolution is approved, the additional principal amount the city will pay on that date to redeem the remaining outstanding balance for the two bonds is five hundred and thirty thousand. As far as the physical impact related to the redemption, the bond and interest fund will absorb an additional five hundred and thirty thousand to pay off the 2010A and 2013B general obligation bonds in 2021. That will be later replenished as payments on the special assessments are received, and staff recommends approval.
Prove Resolution 1098-2021 directing the call for redemption of certain outstanding bonds and providing for notice of said redemption.
Jim?
Anytime you have the ability to pay off debt early, it's a good thing, so, and the ability, so I would second.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion passes eight, zero. That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider approval for the Park City to pay five thousand dollars of a local financial match to the K254 management project. Sean?
Yes, sir. On August sixth of this year, the K254 Corridor Development Association, bi-monthly meeting, had a KDOT engineer provide information regarding a recently completed safety study for the K254 corridor from I-135 in Wichita to Shumway Road in Eldorado. He stated that the next step would be to develop a K254 management plan that would identify needed improvements to enhance safety and allow for more efficient traffic. As with most KDOT projects, they require a letter requesting the plan as well as a financial match, local match of thirty percent. Based on the estimated cost of the study, which is approximately five hundred thousand dollars, the local cost share comes to one hundred and seventy thousand. The K254 executive officers work to create a fair assessment for municipal members. K254 covers twenty-three miles from the north junction in Wichita to Eldorado, equating to seventy-four hundred dollars per mile. Thirteen miles are in Butler County and ten miles are in Cedric County. Butler County's total of the cost share is ninety-six thousand, two hundred dollars, and Cedric County's total is seventy-four thousand dollars. Recognizing the impact that Park City local businesses and citizens have on the K254 corridor, the CDA has asked Park City to provide financial support in the amount of five thousand dollars towards the local match funds. The K254 CDA is committed to improving the safety and efficiency of this valued highway. They have indicated that KDOT will be covering ninety percent of the cost and will select the engineering firm to create the plan. KDOT has stated that a stakeholder committee will be formed with multiple community meetings for public input that will help shape the plan of major improvements. By being part of the study, each municipality will play an important role in the development of the plan. At this point, all they need is a signature and a dollar commitment to cover the proposed local match, and no funding will be required until KDOT selects the firm for the study.
Okay. Jim?
Two questions. I guess I'm struggling with this on why we would want to spend money on a highway that doesn't pass through our community. So maybe why does, why would they ask us? And two, if we do decide to pursue this, is this also an indication of interest of future funding that's going to be needed for this? This is just a study, so are they going to be asking for more money later if we jump on board now?
In regards to your second question, I believe that there is no precedent being set or perception that, hey, if you're in for a penny and you're in for a pound on any recommendations that come along the way. I know that they had reached out to us several months ago and asked us to be a part of the K254 corridor because of the fact that our proximity to the northern junction, just a mile to the south of ours, and the fact that we have seven miles of Interstate 135 running through us, it is a vital link to Park City. As it currently stands, again, there's financial commitments on behalf of Cedric County, Butler County, Eldorado, Bel Air, Kechai, Wichita, and they are currently, if not tonight, here in the near future, working with Benton and Towanda. It's strictly up to the council as to whether they would like to be a part of this or not.
Okay. I'll listen to everybody else. Ben?
I appreciate Jim's questions there on that, too, although I guess I can see, as he mentioned, the benefit concerning the study as you come in here between, well, just anywhere along 254, that is our access point from Eldorado, and in some cases from those exiting, coming from Kansas City area and Emporia, those places like that, Tempeka, that could be their exit route there, coming this direction. So I could see that there. I would be concerned also, though, about the commitment to future projects, just in joining the study. I don't think that's necessarily a bad deal if we can gain valuable insight concerning safety and public, public safety as well. But I guess I could see, though, that the benefit could be there in regards to how it helps us out along the 135 side. I'm interested to hear more thoughts as well, if anybody has some.
Okay. John?
So I was a little on the fence with this as well until reading through this, they talk about improving the safety on 254, and I think there's no doubt that residents from Park City use 254 and probably frequently cross 254 on Rock Road, Web Road, and so on, out to the east edge of the county. And that's where there is significant fatality and serious injury collisions out there. And really, something needs to be done to improve the safety out there. So I feel like as good neighbors and as good stewards of taxpayer money, that this is well-spent.
Tom?
I was going to say, this is partner, or partner relationship type thing with other communities. It's kind of like we're doing with Valley Center on Seventy-seventh Street, and it plays back into the community. All these communities on North Cedric County are working on part of the north junction with Wichita. It affects us. We've got one ramp that goes east off of southbound 235 to 254. We've got, there's a northbound ramp doing that, it's all being redesigned. Right now, KDOT has a federal highway mandate, they can only do an interchange every two miles. So Rock Road won't get one since there's one at Woodlawn, but Web Road would. They're looking at egress and acceleration lanes out there where they don't do them, and they need to do that study and come up with feasibility on it and what the benefits would be before they can do that. And it makes sense for us to be good neighbors and be part of that.
George?
Many years ago, when they did that, there was much talk about making that a limited-access highway and making it a toll road, you know, where, kind of like they do down Oklahoma and Texas, you just drive up, throw a couple of quarters in the machine and go to Eldorado. People are going to pay it. They're not going to go down and go 54. They're going to throw the quarters in the machine and go. But John's right, it needs to be limited access, and those people, I go out there from time to time and go into the doctors and stuff, and people run those stop signs, they don't pay attention. And I, if we was involved in, I'd love to see us push for that to be a limited-access highway or maybe even a toll road. Let the people that use it pay for it instead of the taxpayers. You know, why should some farmer up in Goodland be paying taxes for 254 in Cedric County? People that use that road ought to be the ones paying for it. And I think if we're involved in it, we ought to push, we ought to push for a toll road and a limited-access highway to stop some of those fatalities. That's all I got.
Okay. Ben?
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a letter of commitment to cover the proposed local match of five thousand dollars to be paid out of the Special Streets and Highway Fund.
And John? Okay. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. That brings us to item nine, which is the amendment of the employment agreement with the city administrator. Doug?
Mayor and council, on October, at the October fourth special meeting, the council voted to direct me to draft an amendment to the existing employment agreement with the city administrator and to present that proposed amendment to the administrator. I did that, and a copy of that proposed amendment is in your package. And the city administrator, as my understanding, has accepted the proposed amendment.
Okay. We have one person to sign up to speak on this, Kyle Nordick.
Good evening, Mayor Mann and members of city council. My name's Kyle Nordick, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. I come before you today not only as a citizen, but also as an employee of the city of Park City. When I first started with the city, I was given the most current version of the city policy and guidelines manual, which was adopted May twenty-fifth of 2010. It was implied that those policies were to be followed and that any infractions against them may be subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination. So tell me how it is that our current city administrator was allowed to move to his residence near Sixty-third Street South and Hydraulic and not suffer any disciplinary action until now? In a Park City Post article dated March 2020, Mayor Mann identified that the parcel of land that the administrator currently resides on was already in his ownership. That raises a speculation that it was never Administrator Fox's intention to be a resident of Park City, only to abide by the policy for the contract of initial one year in the public sigh. His infractions of city policy was first brought to me in regards to his appearance at a May nineteenth Cedric County Commission meeting where he stated for public record his place of residency near Sixty-third Street South and Hydraulic. I later found out that many of you already knew of his plan to build and reside there while also knowing of his purchase of a property at 1224 East Sixty-first Street North, well within the city limits. The latter of the property being used now is a pawn in a game of the definition of residency, like many politicians before him have done. Ask any person what their definition of residency is, and I guarantee you that it involves, at a bare minimum, living in a specific place, just not owning a piece of property. I understand that through research conducted by City Legal, he was determined that the city administrator position is not governed by KSA 14205 relating to residency requirements for non-elected officers of the city due to the city's identification in a 1991 ordinance that states that the administrator position was an employee position and not an appointed or elected position. However, Administrator Fox's actions are still a direct violation of the employment contract, which was included a residency requirement. In the January twenty-eighth, 2020 council meeting, the question of why residency requirement was such an important thing kept coming up. According to an article in the International City County Management Association Journal, ICMA, advocates for residency requirements state that in having a residency requirement, you ensure manpower will be available in a case of emergency, you promote a better comprehension for problems within the community, you have an employee that will take more interest in the results of their work, government confidence is increased when managed by residents, you provide jobs to residents and ensure homeownership. Academic research aside, it is what your constituents want. They want someone with a continued vested interest in the community who will represent us not only because of the money that they are being paid, but because they truly believe that Park City is the greatest community. If you do not believe me, put it to a public vote and let the results speak for themselves. That brings us to today, where the Second Amendment to the current employment contract for the city administrator is being presented for your consideration. The First Amendment was passed on February twenty-fifth of 2020, also dealt with a salary adjustment, only that time it was increased by fifteen thousand dollars after being employed for the city just shy of one year. The current amendment seeks to reduce the administrator's salary to one hundred and forty thousand dollars, freeze this cost-of-living adjustment increase for one year, and eliminate the residency requirement as defined by Section sixteen of his contract. You've heard from your constituents on multiple occasions regarding the importance of the residency requirement. So it fathoms me as to why you were trying, again, to eliminate it. I understand that there were some issues regarding the solicitation of employment for the position. I also understand that we failed to define residency in our current contract. However, if we are amending the contract to include a penalty of salary for the infraction, why not include a definition of residency and give Mr. Fox the opportunity to comply? You agree that the violation of the employment contract is a punishable offense, or you would not be proposing the reduction in salary. However, please do not use this as a political loophole to achieve your agenda of removing the residency requirement that you all have mixed feelings on. Do the job that your constituents elected you for, perform the necessary research of the requirements, educate your constituents, and then advocate on their behalf. By limiting, eliminating the requirement, you are sending a grave message to the current and former employees of the city that is it acceptable to break policy and guidelines? As long as you are part of management, we will simply rewrite the rules and move on. Ask yourselves this question: If the administrator can knowingly break this policy without any second thought, what other policies or statutes will they be willing to break in the future? Is this the type?
That's your five minutes.
Thank you.
Do you have?
I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Brandy?
I want to say, I've had, since this has all been going on for the last year, two years, whatever, we have eight thousand residents in the city of Park City, and I've only had four residents reach out to me. So to me, my constituents don't have an issue with the residency requirement. I have never been in favor of the residency requirement. I've made that clear multiple times. And so with that, I'll move to approve the Second Amendment to the employment agreement for the city administrator.
John?
Point of personal preference. I pushed a button, Mayor. I wanted to give Mr. Nordick more time to speak. I wanted to make a motion.
I've got everybody lit up, and I'm going in order.
Okay. Well, just so you know, I, when it comes my turn, I intend to give a motion for him to keep speaking.
Okay.
And that was my intent, too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
John?
I'll withdraw.
Tom?
I'd like to make a motion that we give the gentleman five more minutes.
Okay. And then it was George.
And I'll second that.
Doug? How do I do that? We had a motion, but it never got seconded, but I got a motion and a second on a different one. We're good?
Dispose of the motion that's been seconded.
Yep. Okay. Do you have a restraint on the time, or just?
I just said five minutes. If he's done in thirty seconds, we're done in thirty seconds.
Another five minutes?
Yes. That's what I said.
George?
That's fine.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that passes seven, one. Kyle, you have another five minutes.
I appreciate the other five minutes. Shouldn't take that long. The citizens of Park City deserve a qualified administrator who upholds the mission of our city with moral integrity in mind and does so while living in the city that they administer. I implore you to vote down any amendment that contains verbiage on the elimination of the residency requirement as it pertains to the position of the city administrator. Instead, make a motion to amend the current employment contract of the city administrator to include the reduction of the salary to one hundred and forty thousand annually, freeze the COLA for one year, and include a legal definition of residency with a defined timeline of compliance. Mr. Fox, if this community is good enough to collect one hundred and forty thousand dollars annually from and have a rental property in, then it should be good enough for you to live in. That is all. Thank you.
Yeah.
George?
Yeah, I, I appreciate your words, Kyle. I was on the interview committee that, that interviewed Sean. And one of the things that I mentioned at the end of the interview was, you know, there's a residency requirement. And that being said, it was, Sean didn't have anything that I was aware of and not wanting to acknowledge that. Also, when he signed the contract, the resident requirement was on the contract. It was a legal binding contract.
So we're starting to hit a point where if we need to go back into executive session, we can do that. But the council made an offer, it was accepted, and now it's here for the council to make a decision on. If we want to go back and have an executive session again, we can do that.
Yeah, I, I won't be part of this agreement. I'm going to deny it.
Ben? Mister Mayor, at the risk of where we're at concerning conversation on this, I would ask that we, I'd make a motion that we recess into executive session for at least 15 minutes with council, legal, and city administrator to discuss this contract.
Second.
Yes, sorry, thank you. No, I, I did include him in that. Or what did you say? No? Okay, no.
We can't do it for that purpose.
Okay. Okay, got you. Then yes, sir.
John?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. Fifteen. Use the training room. All right, we're back from our executive session where no binding action was taken. It's 8:04. Tom?
I'd like to ask Mister Fox a question. Part of his employment was the requirement to live in Park City. At some point, you moved.
This is not appropriate. You can't not ask him a question.
If you'd like to go back and now.
I'm dead.
Address, we can go back in executive session and bring the administrator. Pardon me?
I was asking him a question.
I'm saying that's not appropriate for an open meeting. We can do that back in executive session and we can have him come back and recess again. If you want to do that.
I'll see where we're headed first.
Well, I'd make a motion that we go back there then and discuss it.
For discussion of matters involving non-elected personnel with the governing body, the city attorney and the city administrator.
Yes.
For what period of time?
Ten minutes.
I'll second it. And then you have some comment?
No, I was just gonna, I wanna make sure because I don't know if ten minutes is gonna be enough at the rate this is at. I would ask twenty.
Okay, twenty is fine.
That's good. All right, got a motion. Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right, we're back from our executive session where no binding action was taken.
Randy.
My motion's still live on the floor?
No.
I would make a motion to approve the Second Amendment of the employment agreement of the city administrator.
John.
One second.
Tom.
Is this really required since we were instructed that we've already taken this vote? Is this a formality or are we taking a second reading?
It's a formality.
Well, I don't even know why we're taking a vote then.
George.
He made it pretty plain that, that I don't know why we're taking this action.
Okay.
I, I heard what the attorney said. I'm with Tom on that. He said it pretty plain in language that a second reader could understand.
Yeah. John?
I don't know why we're having a motion.
I mean, I, I think it's pretty clear. We want to do it in a public setting where people know where we stand on it. I don't have a problem with it. I know a lot of people are going to disagree with me and a lot of people may agree with me. I'm fine with that. The chips fall where they fall, but this is our way of being transparent to the public of what we're doing.
George.
Me?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know what to do. I, I don't think we're being transparent to the public. You know, at the, at the special meeting, we didn't have a recommended action. Now we have a recommended action as determined by the council. Now who's telling who what? Am I confused? Somebody's confusing me because we got three different stories here. Because I was told in there, or I was told that there was no action on, action didn't have to be on there, but on this, it says recommended action is determined by council. So which way is it? It, it, it says that recommended action is determined by council, but yet we're being told that it's a done deal. How can it be a done deal if it, if it's supposed to be determined by council?
Because, because when that agenda went out, there had, there had been no acceptance. So I was unable to determine what action was be appropriate.
I gotta go with what I've got handed to me.
What?
This is what's handed to me. It says action is recommended by council.
You're the council. You're free to do whatever you choose to do. You're in charge. I, I'm not in charge, George. I'm your attorney. You're in charge. You're the council.
Well, I, and I tell you, I don't think that, I don't think that agreement is, is, is right. I'm not going to argue legalities with you because you're smarter than I am, but I'll tell you, right or wrong, I think I'm right. I don't think that agreement that he signed, I don't think that action that was taken was legal or was, let me change that, was right because when you look at the special meeting, it said discuss it. There was nothing in there about action taken, but yet they took action. It wasn't on there, and to me, that's a deception. Now, that's right. Now, you can argue the legalities of it all you want, but I know the difference between right and wrong, and what happened was wrong. What was, what happened is we had a special meeting which was called so we could discuss this action. There was nothing in there about action taken. In fact, one of our council members wasn't even here. And, but all of a sudden I got thrown on there and this got thrown in there. And I'm telling you, I think that's wrong. It's not right. And I know the difference between right and wrong. I might not know the difference between legal and illegal, but I darn sure know the difference between right and wrong, and we were deceived on that. I did not come here expecting a vote.
Think you were dece, if you, if you, if you think you were deceived, George, you, you can ask me. You can terminate my services anytime.
Mayor.
You're the mayor now. I can't work with morons that can't.
Hey, be careful who you're calling a moron.
I just did.
Well, why don't you, why don't you come back up here? That's it. Walk away. That's what y'all do.
That's true because you are tearing the city apart.
No, you are.
You are.
Mr. Mayor, I, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that. None of order, guys.
You need to shut him up. I have a right. Now that you're the mayor, I want to tell you, I have a constitutional right under the First Amendment to speak what I think.
Agenda, it was already approved last Monday.
If he had not, if he had not accepted it, then you, the governing body, the, the city council could have done anything they wanted. They could have withdrawn that. They could have changed the terms of it.
Okay. No, I just, that, I'm trying to understand because I agree with both, with both George and Melvin that it gets confusing in, in the fact that if we'd already agreed on it, why would it be put on the agenda again? But that makes sense as well. You're saying that had he not signed it before tonight's meeting, then that.
Or had he made a counter offer to your offer.
Then.
Then you would have been free to do whatever you wanted to do. You could have withdrawn it totally. You could have modified it in any way you wanted.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. That, that helps understand. I do want to say also, because I, again, we, we've had executive session after executive session after executive session on this for three weeks now in a row on this issue. And because we do want full public disclosure and full public record, I want to say where I, where I stand and why I stand where I stand. And I know it might not be always the popular opinion, or it might not be the most liked opinion, or it might not be the most respected opinion. And I can understand that and I can take that. The voters of Ward Three have elected me to serve them and to represent them on the council. And I have to do that based upon my own moral compass as well as the wishes and the wants of my constituents. And so I take it very seriously. And if I would be, I would be lying if I did not tell you that the last three weeks as regards to public city, public life within Park City, this has been the most stressful three, two weeks, three weeks really, because unfortunately I'm the one, well fortunately, I'm not going to back down from this. I was the one that asked the initial question that prompted everything over this. And people here on the council want to talk about how important it is that we, that this go on. Only one person asked the question. Only one asked the question as to why or what constitutes our ordinance at that time or supposed ordinance at that time? And what is enforced and what is not? I was the only one that asked the question. And this has been a burning underlying issue for several member, for several of us for some time.
Yeah, I got a question for you. And why, why did you bring this up here? I mean, what, what prompted you to bring this up? Was you asked by some people in your word about this?
Nope, actually. I was, by fellow council members had brought it up and.
And you've never heard this from any of your constituents?
About this most recent part of it?
About living in the city, yeah.
About this most, about the most recent part of Sean's residency?
Right.
No, not from those other than when we had gone out there and we had talked. And so I asked Doug the question. And I asked him specifically what it was that our ordinance states and how it applies. And the reason being is that, you know what, if, if, if this was the ordinance and it's being violated, then we need to uphold it. If it's not, and this, if, if this residency issue is qualified under however loopholes or whatever we want to talk about, then I need to know what our legal standing is to be able to answer that question and to either, and to try to enforce it. And that's what started this. So this three weeks has been a very long week, long series of weeks. And I've had many discussions with several of you on this. And I, and I know that we, we, we don't see eye to eye on all aspects of this and I understand it and I respect that there as well. And last week we had a meeting and the purpose of the meeting was to try to find what is a workable solution between nine members there, because the mayor has a vote in this case if it's a tie. What is a workable solution? And we've gotten to the point where everything is either A or Z. We either do this or we do that and we do nothing in between. We don't even consider the in-between whatsoever the case might be. And so when we talk about the idea of what, what is punishment there for, for violating code? Or what is, what is the repercussions of living outside the city in this case? Because that's what's specifically related to this there. We talked about all that there and we have talked about it for the last three, three meetings. And the idea that, that every offense needs to be punishable by termination, I think, is something that we have to, we, we have to can, really think hard, long and hard about. And so when I come to this, there's a lot of things that go into play into my mind. And it starts from where we started with the process of RFQ several years back to hire city administrator and to where we got to with this issue now of where we're at tonight. And there's a lot of moving parts in here and we want to talk about upholding, you know, that we, we require. And it should be, every single person should be a man or a woman of their word. I get that. I expect that. We expect that of each other or we should expect that of each other. But we also have to understand that sometimes all parties haven't always been that way in this case. And granted, I wasn't on that committee. Several of you weren't on that committee. And we're here tonight partially because of that whole process that led to this. But if we're going to be people of our word there as well, we have to understand that, you know what, it's not one person's sole fault. Granted, each of us make respons, make, take, have to take responsibility for our actions. And I'm only going to give account to God for what I do, not for what you do or what you did to me or what I did to somebody. I'm only going to give account for myself. But I do have to also acknowledge in the case of humans, as valuable humans, that, you know what, there's, there's a lot more than just one simple black and white issue that happened. And looking at that in the big picture, what is our obligation as a council member that upholds all aspects of our ordinances and of our laws? How do I expect, how do I expect our staff to be able to carry and handle out those same principles? I hope it's how we model it to them as well. And so this is not an easy decision. And unfortunately, because of it, I probably angered some of my friends. And that's not my intention. But I do believe we have to make some sort of decision and follow through so that, one, the citizens know exactly where we stand. The staff understands, you know what, you can't violate or you can't skirt, however you want to look at it, and not have any repercussions. But we should also be modeling to them that, you know what, one offense doesn't mean you're gone, hit the unemployment line and good luck. I understand sometimes that's the case. I do. But I don't think that has to be, I don't think that has to be the case. And so if you disagree with me, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I served at the will of the voters of Ward Three. And if the voters of Ward Three are that displeased because of my vote tonight, you have a say November 2nd. And I accept that. But I'm going to do what by Billy, my conscience is leading me to do.
Thank you, Ben. I think I skipped Randy. Randy, I'm sorry.
Since Doug is saying that this is already a done deal and we don't need to take further action, I'll remove my, my motion.
Okay. Tom?
I think Ben handled it more wordy than I would have, but we had two decisions. One of them was administrator move back into town or make it pain for him not to move back into town and give him an alternative. He accepted that. And so Randy's withdrawing her motion and I agree with that withdrawal. I mean, we've already done it. We'd just be doing it again. I don't necessarily agree with all we've gone through. But it kind of kicked the wind out of me when we found out that that wasn't statute for us. It wasn't part of our charter ordinances. It's been deleted. So really it's just part of the, the written contract that we wrote. And so it, it's a different light. I don't like it, but there's nothing I can do about it. So we have an alternative that we presented. He accepted it and we're done.
All right. No action on that item. Next we'll move to governing body reports.
Uh, nothing further tonight.
Randy?
So the community relations board met last night and I just want to let everybody know that the 23rd, Saturday, the 23rd is Fall Festival. And it's from four to seven in Hatt McLean Park. There's going to be lots of events, a little carnival. So I hope everybody can come out. And then on December 4th, everybody to save the date, that that's going to be our tree lighting ceremony here at City Hall from four to six, or six to eight PM. And that's December 4th.
Oh.
Yeah, I wanted to say. What's that?
Or George, whichever one you are.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah. I want to say, any citizen or employee wants to talk to me, my door is always open. They can call me at any time and talk to me anytime they want to.
I would second that for myself. I wanted to let staff know that at WAMPO meeting today, we were provided a new criteria for rating proposals. Hasn't been accepted yet, but there's a, a new weighting and connectivity is a big player in it for bridges and road, federal highway money. So that'll be coming next month, probably be voted on. So just new criteria.
George.
I'd like to talk to the Valley Center news center back there. I'd like for you to take special note that the mayor, our ex-mayor, when he left here called us morons. And he said that with an S, but it was directed at me simply because I wanted to know an answer to what was right or wrong, which is my First Amendment right. To ask these questions, that's what the people elect me for. And apparently I must have hit a raw nerve. I must have been getting close to something. But I, I think he ought to put it in there that he called us morons because that's what he done. We'll see if you print that. That's all I got.
Yeah, so a few months back, there I had asked staff concerning, I know a lot of what's been going on concerning what's been noted as hero pay or COVID pay or, or things along that line that we've seen from the federal government passed down. And so a couple of months back, I had sent staff an email asking regarding what our plan was regarding that. And I received a response back and so I, in talking, we were waiting to see kind of what the county was going to outline and how they were actually going to employ that. And so I would like to see staff prepare back for us, you know, hope maybe by, by next council meeting, something regarding our hero pay for all of our employees, whether they're public works employees that were either in the shop, whether they were working trees, whether they're administrative staff, whether they're police officers. But I'd like to see us look to see what overhead we have, or what not overhead, but what ability we have within our budget for unused salaries throughout our departments to see what we could apply to maybe doing a hero pay for all of our employees here in Park City.
Hey, I got a question about that. You talk about COVID pay for people or employees. Is that the ones that worked during the COVID?
Yes, so my recommendation would.
If they're not employed now?
My recommendation would be that we follow the ARPA guidelines that were set out for what qualifications.
No, they helped us through the COVID there and they're not employed now.
I would go with whatever ARPA has set out for their federal guidelines because those are subject to audit. And so however that would go to keep ours, us clean and to keep D from getting into any trouble related to that, I would, I would suggest we follow those, those guidelines that come with that money.
George. Yeah.
I'm done.
You know, we've talked a lot about, you know, different things tonight. As in, as with any city, if you have an ordinances, I think we should abide by those. If you sign a legal binding contract, you should adhere to.
I got one question. Just for Doug. Since the mayor resigned, does, does John need to be sworn in as mayor?
I, I didn't take the mayor as resigning. I think he left his seat and as the council president, John took over.
I heard him say he resigned and he threw his keys to.
We'll, we'll figure that out over the next conference.
I didn't jump to conclude.
I don't, I don't want to jump to conclusion. Let's, let's just wait and let things slow down a little bit. Let's iron things out and let things heal, okay?
Well, I, I'm tired of that. I, you know, damn it, John, I've got a right to speak my mind. And I don't have to have a mayor go off on me on his fingers and call me a moron. Now that, you talk about right and wrong. We're talking about wrong here. He called us all morons.
Okay. Um, I was going to just report, I've, back in the early part of the summer, late spring, I went to a Valley Center USD 262 board meeting where they talked about growth and expansion in the area. And I've had some side conversations with some of the board members for the school board about us getting a school on our side. Beans how we have so, so much tax paying companies that pay into Valley Center USD 262's tax base. So I've, I've urged and urged and poked and prodded and I finally got an invite tonight to serve on their strategic planning committee where they're addressing growth in the district, where they will potentially, I mean, obviously it's very early for me, but discuss other site planning and things like that. So as an advocate for Park City, my goal is represent Park City. And hopefully someday we can get a, get a school over here. Obviously I don't believe it'll be a high school. They have a new high school that's very nice, but maybe we can get something along the lines of an elementary or something like that. You know, my thoughts are a significant, they, they transport a significant amount of students from Park City to Valley Center in school buses. And those are not efficient. And they have a pretty significant transportation budget. And I feel like a school on our side that's close to our town and our neighborhood is due. And I think that would also save. And I think that would also save them a significant amount of money in transportation costs. So I'm looking forward to that. We'll be serving on that and representing Park City. I believe that is all I have. Ben?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I pushed the button.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He did.
I was going to ask you, I asked you when your son was five years old and you put him on the bus to go to Valley Center, why you didn't pursue that? I'm glad to hear you're doing it finally. So it's like 15 years later, 16 years later.
He, he's a senior now.
Yeah, probably 10, 12 years, yeah.
Your board, I'd be running for the school board over there.
We have one. I did learn that we do have one Valley Center USD 262 board member that lives in Ward One. So happy for that. I'd love to get more involved.
The rest of mine, I make a motion to adjourn too.
Second, Ben.
All right, we have motion and second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Adjourn.